So, good evening. I'd like to call the March 5th, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting and call it to order. We have, anybody here in the meeting?
Free cam.
Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So, at 6 o'clock, we're actually gonna go into executive session, but we are gonna come back into open session right after that. We'll be discussing Excel versus Lisa Pacheco, Robert Joes, and Charles Sullivan individually and as members of the select board. Then we'll have public discussion. After that, we have approved ambulance abatements for the month of January. Approved the Board of Selectmen's minutes from February 5th and the 20th. Approved the senior work off program for the Council on Aging. Discussion of the waterline project. Discussing both the Lakeville Community Access, Lake Cam, and the Middle Borough Community Access, Mid Cam contracts. We'll have the town administrators' report. We'll discuss the issues with Republic Trash Pickup. Under Personnel, we'll discuss Planning Use Administrator Position. And then we have a change of status for Philip Pine and Stephanie Pittsley-Brum. So, at this moment, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session and to come back into open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares. Excel Recycling LLC versus Lisa Pacheco, Robert Joes, and Charles Sullivan individually and as members of the select board. CA number 1773, CV 0062.
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss Excel.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call the members, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Joes?
Yes.
And Ms. Pacheco, yes.
And with the record please, reflect that I will be recusing myself in executive session.
Okay.
So, no?
So, we're gonna, just wanna, for the record, that we are out of executive session and back into regular session. Before we get started with the rest of the agenda, I just wanna say that I wanna thank everybody, the citizens of the town of Free Town, for their patience in the storm. It certainly took everybody by surprise. I don't think anybody really realized the impact, especially in several neighborhoods that are still tonight without power. But we also have to remember that, you know, they're out there, they're working, they're trying to get things done. They know how important it is to ensure the safety of the citizens. Also, I wanna make mention of the fire and rescue dispatch and also the police department. They were nonstop, they worked right through all kinds of crazy hours, checking on people, you know, checking on the roadways and everything else. So, I just wanna thank them very much. And also the unsung heroes, the mail carriers. I can't believe that they were still out delivering mail. It was just crazy to see them and, you know, they're unsung heroes, I think, and I just wanna make mention of that also. With that being said, we can carry on with the night's agenda. We are out of executive session, like I said, and so now it's time for weekly public discussion. Anybody here for public discussion?
Yes, we all are.
Okay.
What are we gonna do about-
Do you see your name for the record, please?
Oh, Steve Tripp. What are we gonna do about this wall? Well, we're not gonna let it go back up the way it is. I mean, definitely a safety hazard. I mean, could you imagine, this was only a smaller part of a hurricane. Can you imagine if we had a tornado, where would those containers go?
We can't say too much because it's not on the agenda, but we did have the building and health inspector there today. Building inspector responded Friday night, like 9 o'clock Friday night. I don't know if he went Saturday, he was supposed to go Saturday. I don't know if he went back on Saturday. But I do know both he and Derek were there today inspecting the situation. We've had a lot of discussion on that, believe it or not. About 40 minutes.
So, I think that, well, I can only speak for myself. I've gone down there, I've taken pictures. I know, I think I know what happened. We're gonna ask for a detailed plan of how those are gonna go back up. We're asking for the stamped engineering plans to make sure that they go back up in a safe way. So, we're waiting for those plans right now from the building inspector.
Did you realize that those ones in the back would've went over, they would've been on the railroad tracks?
We are very fortunate, and that company is very fortunate, that no one got hurt. Thank you.
Yes, there's refrigerators and stuff that are inside his scrap pile. Do you, anybody know where the free-on went for those, or if it came out of them, or they're shredding them?
So, we have, well, I will be part of a meeting tomorrow morning with DEP. There are several things that I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna request from them. One of the things that happens is when the trucks come in, they're weighed, and then they're emptied. And then on the way out, they're weighed again. So, if you take the average weight of a truck, you would know if there was stuff in the truck or not. I.e. tires, i.e. any of those things that are not supposed to be shredded. Those should go back out, and the truck should have some weight to it. So, those are the ones, some of the things that we're gonna ask for. But that goes along with whatever records or logs that they may have.
Can we get those?
I'm gonna ask tomorrow.
Did Excel take a permit to do that wall? Did, do it? I mean, did it take a permit or you just can put a wall up?
The original wall, the new, the, what's going on right now?
Correct.
What's going on right now?
No, the wall, when they put the wall with the containers up-
The one that fell down.
The one that fell down.
We've requested from the building inspector everything that he has, from the permit that was, that should've been issued, the engineering review that should've gone on, and the engineering stamp.
So, did they take a permit?
We requested that today.
We requested it today, he has-
He hasn't gotten the tools yet.
And David's gonna follow up with them in the morning.
So, you don't know if Excel took a permit to put that wall up?
Personally, at this moment, I personally don't know, but that's why we wanted to know when it came up Friday. And because today was the first business day, we asked today to have everything. He's gonna go through the files and get everything he has.
Because we mentioned about that wall, because those containers are empty. And I have front seat of Excel. And it's a big concern for those containers to, if this was a hurricane or tornado, where would they end up? I mean, we, and we, we've expressed our concern about this to the town, because those containers are empty, and it's been a year since they've been up there, almost a year since they've been up. And we just waiting for, you know, for something bad to happen for us, to do something, to do something about it.
One would hope an engineer signed off on everything that was done there, and he would be liable for any failures that happened if it wasn't done to his standards. I can't speak intelligently to it right now, this, I don't have the information in front of me. If I had, I would tell you. I probably have more than you. I've been-
These are two containers he's got. Standard 45 feet in the air on end.
So, I don't know how they're secured to the ground either. I don't know when those went up.
Has a truck up on top of the pile.
With his tires on.
Here's a refrigerator. Does anybody take the free-on out of-
That's another one down there?
Yeah. Before they go into the trash, right, before they get shredded.
Same thing with the cars, are they taking the free-on, taking the refrigerant out of the cars?
Right. How about the tires and everything, they're all over there, right?
Yep.
If you went there the other day, you rode down the side road? Did you see that trailer he's got parked there with all the crushed cars on it?
I didn't see the trailer. I saw another truck that didn't have any cover on top, so I took a picture of that one.
The big black one there, it's got no side on one side.
It's all in your air gas.
Right, it's all by air gas.
Yeah.
That's full of flattened out cars to go through the shred, because that's where he parked them.
I didn't climb, so I don't know what's inside of there.
You're parking them over there, there's nothing on the ground underneath those things. Those things, they got oil and everything else coming out of them and stuff. There's no separator over there. That's just going right into the ground over there. It's just like-
They have one parked on the pen, too, out front.
And if you looked at them now, because they're gone now, but if you would've looked at them today, all the gas tanks are still in those cars. So, is he pulling the gas tanks out before he shreds them, or is that what's making the explosions? Good questions.
Yeah. I think the propane tanks make the explosions, but that's just-
It could be.
I got another question. Assuming Excel took the permit, and the building inspector looked at these containers, what's the town of Free Town gonna do for those containers to go up again? What changes are gonna be made so we don't go through the same thing again?
Yeah, why, we should have some consideration to a new type of sound mitigation, because we know the sound mitigation currently doesn't work, because they're currently failing their sound mitigation requirements.
So, DEP has required them to put up another sound, sound system, I'll call it a sound system, but a wall, a sound wall. So, they're in the process of working with the board and deciding how that's gonna work, like when we're gonna allow them to work, how they're gonna put it up. So, we're working with the building inspector, the board of health. We're not working directly with Excel, but we're working through the board of health and the building inspector to see how they're gonna, how they're gonna erect those. So, that's number one. So, we haven't had any further discussion. We're not gonna know if that sound barrier is gonna work. But I think it's the, I think it's a consensus, or my feeling is that the board is gonna also want those containers to go back up as a second protective measure. So, you'll have those containers going back up properly, in the, in the right manner, and, you know, looked after. And then also whatever DEP requires of them also. So, we'll have, we're trying to do two protective measures for sound.
Are they running while they're doing this, or are they not running?
So, I don't wanna get too involved in this, because it's, it's hard. So, we haven't had, really talked about it yet. We're waiting to see if the building inspector, what the building permit from the building inspector will detail, and then we'll make a determination at that time. But, for instance, if they wanted to work 4 to 9 o'clock at night, we would say, no, they can't work on anything else but erecting the wall. But we're, we're not at that point right now.
Yeah. Another concern is the street of coming out of Excel's road, I forget the name of the road, into North Man, into North Man. You still, you see metal and nails everywhere still, you know? You know, a few months ago, my daughter had a flat tire with a big nail in it. College student, $150 out the window. I mean, it's still there. When you drive, I drive that road every day, you can see the material on the ground all the time.
So, it's tomorrow again in our meeting, we will talk about all the pictures that we have of the trucks not being covered. So, we'll bring that up at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think an unsecured load is more of a police issue than, you know, DEP.
Tried to do that before, but they said they weren't, weren't that interested in it to it.
A lot of trucks coming out from North Man into Excel, they take their wide road, and they come right over. You gotta back up, or you gotta move aside.
They're in the right lane.
And it's like, they, you can't, we can't do nothing about it. I mean, they come right into it, right into our side, and we have to back up, either we have to move, move side with-
They were coming in, they were coming in on a side of the afternoon. My wife was going out off of Ridge, out of Ridge Hill. She was in the right lane, Excel was coming in, taking that wide turn, and the driver was looking down, wasn't even paying attention. My wife had to divert over into Borges' property there, Main Street or Water, to avoid getting front end, you know, collision. So, you know, they're not paying attention either.
That intersection's been a problem for a long time. They actually widened it two years ago to help mitigate some of that.
For trash trucks, which would probably make that turn no problem.
Yeah, now.
But a trailer truck, yeah, but a trailer truck still can't make it.
It states on one side, and Borges is on the other, and it's kinda tight. It, that's, it's a problem intersection. We gotta try and move the telephone poles and the wire.
You get the same situation when the guy goes down to the four corners with that car carrying, and he can't make that turn either. He stands there in the middle of the four corners and let all the cars come out before he can make that turn. But you can't tell anybody where to go.
Well, you tried to tell me all that, where to go.
Yeah. I think we should put a rotary in down there. That's what we need to do. That would really jam it up good.
Can you speak to that? He just mentioned Saturday, Saturday.
Yes, so, that was my other point.
That's what I wanna know, yeah.
They're driving their trucks on a Saturday into Excel.
This is their trucks leaving Excel Saturday afternoon, 3:30, this past Saturday.
This is last month.
Full truck, uncovered top, going down Ridge Hill.
What date? Do you, you don't know a date specifically?
This past Saturday.
This past Saturday we're working?
This past Sa, I'm sorry, it was the-
This past Saturday was a storm, the Saturday before.
No, actually, it was this past Saturday, because I was, yeah, I'm pretty sure it was this past Saturday.
I mean, several stops they had taken.
The third.
I was leaving with my kids, we were going to, going to Mass, because it was 4 o'clock Mass, it was 3:30. I was like, first I cussed them out with, what, these damn trucks, and I realized, wait, it's Saturday. Why is this truck even here? It was 3:30, this past Saturday, guaranteed, leaving there, not coming in, they were leaving.
If he comes in after hours, what they do is they park over by air gas in that field.
And that's what I wanted to ask, yeah. Is that a loophole that they're working or not working on Saturday? Because they definitely left Saturday afternoon. I should've snapped a photo, but-
Every single day, 4:15, 4:20.
That's a routine, yeah.
That, that's when that truck comes in loaded with crushed cars.
In?
It comes in after 4 o'clock, and it always parks over by air gas. It goes up that road, because that way there, he's not opening his gate, he's not going in the thing. And it's the same thing with the pen out in front.
Oh, you mean, he's leaving a full truck, and he's leaving a full truck, so when he opens the next morning, he's-
Right, they're already there. But they're still coming in through the road.
I don't know, yeah.
It's the same thing with that pen he has out in front, in front of the other place. They come in there at 4:30, 5 o'clock. They park their cars there, so they just drive in with the, with the Excel's truck, park it. They get in their own vehicle and drive back out. It's his loophole around the 4 o'clock thing.
So, you can't confirm that, that they shouldn't be doing that? They shouldn't be operating?
Their gates need to be closed, and they can't be doing anything on a Saturday. Now, whether a truck comes in and parks that air gas, that's not in our control.
But their property should be closed, locked, shouldn't be running 4 o'clock, and no Saturdays.
So, why would they run it on the holiday?
We didn't realize.
We nip that, don't worry about that, it's not gonna happen.
Can't talk about that, but we asked the same question and-
We nipped it, it won't happen.
So, if that's in fact a loophole, what do we do about that? If that, in fact, is a loophole, that they're closed down the street, that their trucks are leaving the lot at the end of the road, who do we call, who do we report that to?
I don't know if that's really under our purview. There is parking zoning regulations, but that's not really a part of the law. You have to have so many spaces and stuff. It's only new.
Right, the overnight, the overnight parking, remember?
Truck stop.
Deodorant, deodorant, the smell of oil and rust in the air has no change. It's a hit or miss thing, but it's not all day, thank God, thank God for that. But it had, that has no change at all. I don't understand how they passed, how they passed with DEP with that.
Well, that air quality test is based on a one, one short period of time, right?
One day.
Yeah, one day, so-
One day, four hours.
Is that a, is that a true picture of what's going on there? No. So, we need multiple, multiple instances of it.
You know, they're not testing for metal in there, that's what I understand. That they're not testing for metal in the emissions, I mean, there's metal, spit metal out everywhere, no kind of metal, you know? Are you gonna be sharing the pictures and videos I sent with, sent to you last night with DEP?
Tomorrow, 8:30.
Pretty much everything we get, we forward to DEP. I shouldn't say pretty much, everything we get, we forward.
Anything else?
Do you confirm whether they're being fined? We heard they were being fined $1,000 a day, I don't know, is that accurate?
From DEP?
I can confirm that they're being fined by DEP $1,000, up to $8,000 right now. What about violations against the industrial zone bylaw? I spoke to Scott about that, he didn't seem to know anything. I can't speak for Scott, I don't know.
When do the violations renewed? Is it May? Do we know anything about that, or you can discuss it now?
We will have it here, and just like we did last time, probably at the elementary school, just like we did last time, we'll have legal counsel there, just like we did last time.
And it's a stenographer.
And a court-appointed stenographer that we have to have there. Literally, everything, don't forget, everything is in court, so it's not like we can just make random, everything we have to make sure is legal and defendable in all the decisions that we make. Because if we already are in court, any more steps we take are just gonna add to litigation one way or the other. So, everything, we have to be-
Precise, cautious.
And make sure our steps are sound steps that we can legally defend.
Right.
So far, knock on wood, I think we have, so far from what judgments we've gotten, we've been okay.
Obviously, you know that the court upheld our license restrictions, so-
Recently.
Right, they're appealing.
That's why I was asking.
So, we're, you know, they're going through the appeal process, and we're working with everybody involved to make sure that we have all our bases covered. So, that's why we can't say too much, but-
Sometimes it seems like we're not doing anything, but that's because our hands are tied and everything. It's like a duck. You see something nice and calm on the surface, but everything behind the scenes is lawyers and letters and legal documents, and appeals, and counter appeals, and-
You can tell from our 35-minute executive session. Yeah. It's not fun talk, but-
No.
Am I allowed to ask, since I, like, what happened with this wall? What wall? Sorry.
I think you can talk to them, and they'll explain the whole situation to you. There's opinions that we have, and there's a-
Well, no, I, like, what, like a wall of a building, or a wall of cars, like?
Wall of shipping containers.
Wall of shipping containers, okay. Standard times. Wall of shipping containers fell, okay.
Sound mitigation barrier, they use those for sound mitigation. So, they bring their property with, with shipping containers to hold the sound in, which-
And fell, and-
Didn't really work.
Didn't work, and it's been a very, very loud weekend.
Yeah, and they'll, they can fill you in on what happened, we can't really-
I would just ask, when you guys debate how you're gonna require the mitigation to be reinstalled, that we consider hurricane-force construction able to-
The law requires it.
The law, yeah.
Right.
We're in certain hurricane zones, so many miles, it goes by miles from the ocean.
Because obviously, that certainly wasn't-
Wasn't addressed.
Addressed in the first go-around.
And we, I, like I said, I can't speak to that, where maybe the engineer did do all the stuff, and he was just wrong.
Yeah.
And he's an engineer, I'm not.
And until we get those plans, we're just-
Guessing and surmising.
Yeah.
So-
And if there aren't any plans, then is there any recourse?
We'll discuss that. If that is the case, then we'll take next, the next step.
We need to have the answers to our questions first.
You're three steps ahead of us.
No, we're a little ahead, too.
Like we said, you can do all that. We're gonna make sure that we do it in a specific order, so- We want any-
Is there another permit for a wall like that on top of, or is that a special permit? Is there like another permit that the building inspector issued for something like that?
He's gonna be issuing it for a building to commit, if that's-
So, you would need a separate permit for the wall, separate permit?
A new wall to go back up, you're talking about?
Or the first wall or a second wall?
To go back up?
Does the wall itself need its own permit?
One would think so, but I, like I said, I can't speak to that, I'm not. We will have those answers, though, before it happens.
And they're not running then? I assume they're just, they're not supposed to run with the wall?
Yeah, can they operate with the wall down?
According to, according-
Their air crew will do it. They're not supposed to run, right, without the wall?
I don't think they were running the shredder today, from what I understand. They weren't running the shredder today. They're running everything else but the shredder. They're not supposed to run the shredder without the sound.
That's their biggest sound genera.
So, if the walls are not up tomorrow and they're running the shredder, then I anticipate a phone call.
Well, you, you have a DEP meeting, so-
Right.
We're already meeting with DEP.
The town field is gonna be at that meeting?
Yes, uh, no, sorry.
She was supposed to be at one today, but DEP couldn't make it.
Yep. We were supposed to have it either this morning, but DEP couldn't make it because of the weekend storm. So, they postponed till tomorrow, at 8:30.
Is this something that you, I mean, could let residents know about, even though we're not invited to the meeting? Could we just know that it's occurring? Because we had no idea that there were meetings between, or is this just like a regular thing that's been going on?
No, 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 this was, this was set up because of the test results.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, we wanted, we wanted to hear from them what the test results meant.
Are they gonna share that with residents, like they have, like they don't have?
Yeah. So, once we know tomorrow-
I won't, excuse me, I won't be there, Charlie's recused, so it won't be a selectmen's meeting, it won't be an open selectmen's meeting. Lisa will be the representative for the board. She'll have, digest all the material, and then in our next executive session, we'll go through everything that she's found out and relay to them from our side.
If you need backup, just give us a call.
Yeah, I got you on speed dial, nobody's there.
Don't think we take this lightly, because, believe it or not, this is every meeting we have, we have an executive session, and all this stuff is hashed out every sign we have a meeting.
I really just wanted to, like, stay in and comfy on the couch and do a puzzle over the weekend. It didn't work like that. You know, I'm like, I'm saying about, can you bring me down there? Because I won't drive, like, I was like freaking out.
We know the feeling.
Take me down there, take me down there, so-
It's a long ways to the back, isn't it? When you run down by air gas and keep going.
My truck's still covered in mud.
So is mine.
I put it in four-wheel drive.
No, it wasn't that bad.
Well, that's what I was afraid of, because that's soft back there, because I went and made the loop and parked, tried to get high, and-
Yeah, so, I mean, we're smiling on the outside, but not so much on the inside.
One of the photos I sent you, there's, you can see, there's a trench of water that runs in front of the catch basins in the back. And I, I think it's shredder residue that's sitting there on the edge. That's where they had it before. But it spills into the water, and that water's just in the ground. There's nothing that's preventing that, that leaching.
In front of air gas?
No, this is the back, so the southern-
Inside is contained.
The southern boundary of Excel, that long side boundary, so in front of the catch basin. So, from the catch basin to the front of their facility, there's like a trench, and it's full of water, and there's stuff, piles of stuff that's spilling into the water. And there's like metal that they have in there, and it's just like a spill-off of the site. So, just when you look at the photo, you'll see it.
Yeah, I saw that. I wasn't sure if that was the retaining wall, like the concrete blocks, the retaining wall, that no longer have barrier inside of them.
This is the other side.
So, this is on the other side?
This is where there were no container walls.
I was trying to picture the way it-
Yeah, this, this is the, the opposite side, where there's no-
Like, it's south side, I'm sorry. I'm thinking north side.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the north side threw down, and then the other side was just open, except for those basins and the containers in the back.
There is catch basins on the south side.
Yep.
I remember, we did a site walk-through there, beginning of you there, somebody was, somebody was there, one of your, your neighbors was there. Before anything even went up.
The guy that sold his house, yeah.
Yeah.
He was there.
And they showed us some kinda catch basin, and all the water's supposed to run into that, and then flow through different steps, and-
Yeah.
It doesn't, it flows right off the property, and obviously into that long trench.
And he said, oh, we're gonna recycle that water into the shredding thing.
Something, and then the level takes up, yeah, yeah.
But I don't know.
He says it goes through gas separators, and then it, out of the gas separator, it goes into those retention, those retention tanks. And as they flow, it's supposed to settle the heavy stuff up. Of course, you have massive rainstorms like this.
Yeah, I'm sure it's anything.
It has no time to sit there, and even the gas, even the gas separator has no time to separate the heavy stuff, what's floating and stuff, so everything gets washed through into those tanks. And then it goes to the, it goes all the way up to the end, and there's no bottoms in those. So, those just go right, it just seeps into the ground. That's the way they're designed, but it's supposed to be like clean water before it reaches there. But if you look at all the pictures now, all, all this stuff blew into those, it always blows into those pits, water, and it's all the way down into the last one, which seeps into the ground.
Well, when they're frozen, they're all snowed, and all the water flows on top, and it's a big round.
David, can we send a letter to, we're not, we're way off the agenda, we can't be-
No, we can. You can, you can direct him. We're not voting on it. You can direct him to send a letter to MIPA.
Can we send a letter to MIPA to review their MIPA plan and our concerns with contamination of their drainage base? And possibility of that leaching into, off the property?
I don't think they have a stormwater permit. I don't know if they need one or not, but-
That's what we'll find out from MIPA.
They're one, so we have their big NPDs permit right there on the side, on the fence, and it's not a problem.
They're in construction, Excel's already done.
Right, but I don't think they're on file. I mean, I've requested, and I haven't gotten it. I don't think it's there.
Okay. All right, you guys all set? No, I know, but-
You wanted to go home tonight?
No, you're probably getting us in trouble. It's more, we're trying to do everything judicious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could do some write-ups in the standard time, still.
Yeah, why don't you guys go chit-chat?
I've called them, I've phoned them two times. They said they were interested, and never took any of them.
No, you haven't directed it to me.
I guess not.
Free Town. Sure.
Like, be gentle.
You can use the kitchen if you want.
Please of me.
If anyone wants to vent their frustrations.
You can either go in the kitchen, if you want.
Yeah, the kitchen are upstairs.
Closed off. Feel free, I don't know where the light switch is. Check. Ambulance abatements.
Here we go, ambulance abatements. So a motion to approve the annual, annual, ambulance abatement for twenty eighteen in the amount of thirty-four, one fifty-six, twenty-five. And also the write-offs for the period ending in January twenty eighteen for one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents for a total of thirty-five thousand five eleven seventeen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve the meeting minutes of February fifth and twentieth.
I haven't gotten all the way through them. You, you can abstain, Charlie. Oh, I'll approve this, make a motion to approve this, right?
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Charlie abstain.
Charlie, you missed all the fun.
I know. Okay, just in time for this.
Okay, approved senior work off for Fernando Tavares, Brad. They left him off by accident, so it's the board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion to allow Fernando Tavares to be part of the senior work off program.
All right.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So your discussion of water line project, we just got the new figures in, but we haven't had time to review them. I'd like to set up a meeting between the water commissioners, the board of selectmen, Kim, and possibly CGA. Would you like to do that?
As the board of selectmen or as part of the building committee?
As the board of selectmen.
On a building committee night?
Uh, no. See, it's a water project, so really, it should go to the, I know, it should go to the water department before it comes to us for their review. And then we should talk about it as a whole. We don't have to have CGA there. I just thought that if we're going down those lines, they might want to talk about construction timeline and how that fits. But what's the board's pleasure? And then we can talk about funding and all of that all in one night.
Uh, we have a deadline, the fourteenth, is that, what's our election?
If we have to pull it off, we have to pull it off, but yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, I just need, yeah, but I just need a date. You don't have to make a motion, but I just need a date.
Well, we did.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that motion and.
To be amended by a D O.
Do you want to do next Monday night since we're not meeting anyway?
Next Monday night is the twelfth. We have. You have March, this is the twelfth here. Why? I said March two thousand eighteen.
Why did they say that?
Because you're probably on vacation again. Unless it's Chanley, Chanley vacation, not you.
You're here on the Tuesday.
We have negotiations.
We're here Tuesday.
We're here Tuesday already for.
For by negotiations.
All right, let's do it right before that.
Perfect.
Okay, what time?
Uh, four o'clock.
Well, you're here at four thirty, so you want to do it after. Yeah.
Do I do it after by negotiations?
Yeah.
Nope.
Is that okay?
Negotiations. Yeah.
We're here at full authority, right? We're not, we can't do it before.
That's fine.
Otherwise, we'll be here at noon.
I'm just thinking, planning board, but.
You have a planning board?
No, I should be there the other week, so that's fine.
Okay, so.
To six o'clock?
Six.
March.
Well, March thirteenth at six o'clock.
Okay, March thirteenth at six.
amend my motion to March thirteenth at six o'clock.
I'll second that.
Here, at COA.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, discuss and vote Lakeville community access media, Lakeham, Middleborough community. I know that you also had something that you wanted to say, so Lynn.
Uh, Lynn Rocha, Free Cam, been your videographer for.
Come on up.
For six years, no, I can't get on. Been your videographer for six years. I know that Free Town does not have the subscriber base to stand alone and to have a studio and to have facilities. We just don't have that type of subscriber base that would, that would allow us to do that. So we have to align with a, you know, another cable organization. And I would hardly recommend that you stay with Middleborough for a number of reasons. Middleborough offers us technical support when we need it. They're always helpful. Their hours of operation are more, they're, they're just open more than Lakeville is. You have a twenty-four hour turnaround time. This meeting will be taped tonight. Tomorrow afternoon, I will edit it and it will be on the air. If you go with Lakeville, I couldn't guarantee that you would have the same type of turnaround time and it would, it would be as, you know, as good as that. Also, something that you should be aware of is that Middleborough is in current negotiations to have a studio. This would benefit you guys tremendously if you wrote it into the contract that you could be able to utilize that studio on occasion, on, you know, on a, you know. You know, make some arrangements for that so that then you could do your own programming. And I would be more than delighted and truly delighted to be able to help you facilitate that. So that you could do programming, talk shows, you know, things with the police, you know, things with the finance committee. Things with the COA, where they could come to the studio and we could actually do a show. So I really think that Middleborough is your best bet and, you know, they have, they have many advantages which could benefit Free Town. So I hope that you take that into consideration.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
You've been a tried and true patriot for us. I appreciate all your work.
Oh, and we're working on a logo. My cousin, who is a graphic artist, is working on a logo for us.
Perfect. All right, so I'll turn it over to Dave.
Okay, the situation is, we all are aware, both contracts, both Middleborough and Lakeham, who handles all the educational program. Has come up at the both, at the same time. In the previous contract, Lakeham was, was only charging us five thousand dollars. And in their new proposal, they recommended a stratified proposal that ran anywhere from thirty-four thousand to sixty-nine thousand dollars. And in the first option, one, we'd leave it with Middleborough and handle it for the educational portion at, at thirty-four thousand dollars. But we'd also have those same costs that we would need to then incur for Middleborough, which is the five thousand dollar charge. As well as approximately eight thousand dollars in hiring personnel, materials that are used and, and, and those kind of things. So you'd be looking at, like, taking the least costly option with Lakeham to continue to have the baseball games and the plays and the, and the football games on the cable television. We'd have to pay thirty-four thousand dollars plus the thirteen thousand, which is a total of forty-seven thousand dollars. On option two, Lakeham has offered to, and they negotiated to provide both the municipal portion of it. And as well as continue their educational portion of the programming for the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars. Now granted, that is cheaper than what we're paying right now, but only because Lakeham has been only charging us five thousand dollars. So if you look at that, what they're proposing to do, they're gonna charge us a three thousand dollar capital cost, which is associated with the equipment that they had to purchase in order to do that. They're gonna cover the board of selectmen meetings, up to eight meetings as well as two events, for a total of ninety-six hearings each year. And they're gonna continue to provide full coverage for the schools and all the events that are covered there for the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Now, you said six to eight meetings. That's per annum, or is that sixty?
No, that's each month.
Monthly, okay.
So I figured four board meetings, worst case, you know, couple of police station building committee meetings, planning board meeting, that we're in that ballpark. And what I did on the second page is I broke up all the costs to show, you know, where our revenue is. And our revenue will cover the twenty-four thousand dollar cost that we take in annually. I did sit down with Bruce Wilber to discuss this proposal while he's not happy, he wasn't happy with the, the capital cost and the fact of paying for the equipment. They have included that as part of their negotiation. He said he, he would favor the, the option number two from Lakeham. Some of those other numbers, it shows the total amount in the cable access account. Also shows total FY seventeen revenue, which is, covers the twenty-four thousand dollar cost that we currently would pay. And shows the reserve and that would be in the account after the twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, there are, we, we're, the proposal's gonna go year by year because we wanna sit down with the cable advisory committee. And negotiate a contract that's favorable to the town of Free Town. We know it, on the subscriber fees, we're not getting the amount we should be getting. We know that we should be getting equipment and possibly a studio. We definitely want to get the increases of the subscriber fees. So I have reactivated the cable advisory committee. We're gonna have our first meeting on Thursday. And we're gonna start discussing that strategy and negotiating with Comcast. We want to go year by year because we don't know where we're gonna be by twenty twenty in order to, you know, we may be able to do the whole thing ourselves by the year twenty twenty if we get the money from Comcast. The downside is, you know, we have devoted people that have served for years and years and years doing the, you know, governmental portion of the, the government channel. Board of Selectmen hearings and town meetings and, you know, we, we, it's not, not a reflection of them. It's a reflection of the fact that we have, you know, these additional costs that now come into play and we gotta offset those costs with the best proposal. And the best price for the taxpayers and residents of Free Town.
So we have been paying seventeen eight sixty-nine in the past?
Yeah, that's the total. You pay approximately eighteen thousand dollars. We're gonna be getting six thousand dollars more.
Than that.
Than that, but we're gonna be getting both channels.
No, I mean, if we didn't, if we kept everything the same as it is right now.
Yeah, if we kept everything the same, what's, what's the bottom line?
If you kept everything the same, we kept Middle, Middleborough doing the governmental meetings. We'd approximately twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the selectmen meetings and the town hall.
Oh, whatever other government meetings we have.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'd have to go back to the other proposal from Lakeham, which would be option number one, which.
It's seventy-two thousand.
You do all the governmental, but we're gonna charge you, Lakeham is gonna charge us just for the educational portion of it, thirty-four thousand dollars. So you're going from eighteen to, you know, it's ten, forty-seven thousand dollars.
So the way we have, the way it is right now, it's gonna cost us twenty-two thousand for Lakeham, five thousand for Middleborough and roughly thirteen thousand, because that's what it costs us yearly for.
Well, it's a yearly cost, but then we get, you gotta add in the, the twelve thousand.
Right, I'm not even looking at the one-time fee. I'm talking about just yearly, year over year.
Cost is twenty-two.
Twenty-two plus five is twenty-seven plus, plus thirteen.
Well.
Twenty-two for, for Lakeham.
Twenty-two for Lakeham, that would include their fee.
Five thousand for Middleborough.
Middleborough, yeah, and then.
And then we run around thirteen thousand for some contracts. So that's forty thousand dollars.
Okay, so I have a question too then. Why in option one, if, if we're gonna have, if we decide that we're gonna stay the way we are. Why is Lakeham charging us six thousand dollars for channel capital cost and another six thousand dollars for government channel yearly?
Yeah, well, I, that, that is part of, I negotiated, Lakeham option two was a lot higher than it was. And I said, all right, if we're gonna do this, both municipal and educational, what kind of deal can you give us? And that's how we came out to those numbers.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't understand what those two costs are. If, if Middleborough's gonna handle all the government side of this and we're only gonna use Lakeham for the educational side of this. Why, why is Lakeham still charging us for govern, government on both of those accounts?
I, I, I can't explain that. I don't know why they would be doing that.
Do you follow me?
It's not inclusive.
I know they sell.
They say, actually, they're probably saying that it's, it's twelve thousand dollars for the capital cost. And I got them down to spread it out over a period of time.
But what capital are they extending?
They're not gonna be extending any capital on that because what, Lake, uh, uh, Middleborough camera is gonna be doing that.
Right, so why are they still gonna charge us?
Middleborough camera only does our meetings.
Yep.
On, for the school, Lakeham does their own, and they have their own mic setups, they're all that, those drops.
And they have a server that they had to pay thirty-six thousand dollars. That's what the capital cost is.
It's, it's, it's the Lakeville side of it all. It's not the Free Town side of it. Lakeham is only for the schools, only the educational portion of the contract.
But now they, they propose to do.
They want to do everything, but that's currently all they, we do with them. Middleborough's supposed to be giving us government, public access and, what's the third one? It's supposed to be a package of three.
Education.
Educational.
But we don't use the education from Middleborough. We use it from Lake, from Lakeham, because that's what Lakeville uses.
I can't, why can't we just say we want to stay with the way things are, give us a price for just education?
We tried to.
They did that. That's what, that's what they're saying. It's, it's.
They're saying they're, they're grossly underbilling us at five thousand dollars.
That's it. They're, they're saying that we're getting the deal of the century that, you know.
They won't redo it for five thousand dollars.
All right.
So now you're looking at, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars.
What has gone up so significantly that's like triple the cost?
They just said they haven't been billing us the way we should have been billing.
They've upgraded their side.
They do a lot of programming at school.
They're doing digital and all this other stuff supposedly that they're not billing us for in the current contract. Now, I haven't spoken to Jose since that first meeting in, whatever that was, September, October, somewhere around there. He was saying the reason why the second option wasn't as high is because they wouldn't spread the costs. Instead of hitting, getting hit for the cost like we do with option one, they, they spread it over all three. It's, the cost is cheaper because you spread it over three channels instead of the one channel. But that was, like I said, that was in November. Since then, he's gone through all these re- reiterations.
Charlie, you got anything?
I'm still trying to.
Trying to decipher all of this, right?
Yes.
I know. I, I don't know.
It's just that if you want to keep Middleborough doing the government portion, then you're going, it's gonna be a lot more in terms of both Middleborough and then Lakeham, what they're requesting.
I feel like we're being stronghold to make a decision, like, not make a decision, but I feel like we're being stronghold to move everything over there, so.
Well, they definitely make it enticing. Can we have him, can we have Jose come in for the next meeting?
I don't care.
Ask him straight out to the numbers and. Is there somebody from Middleborough you want to have come in for the next meeting and?
I can talk to Karen or Zach.
See what they're offering. I haven't put together a package to see what they, they're offering.
I'll just say, like, I've been very happy with the way everything's been done, like even last minute, we can call, Middleborough, they'll come. You know what I mean? We're not in competition with anybody around here, so. We're not in competition with anybody around here, so, I mean...
I, I'll do whatever the board desires.
No, I understand that.
I'm trying to, my goal was just try to get the best cost that I could get.
Right, I get that.
And I feel sympathetic to, you know, your situation, because you've been doing it forever and I...
I've been doing it for, I've been doing it for six years, and I'm here anytime you guys call.
And I don't wanna take somebody's job away, but by the same token, you know, I can't, you know, do it.
And don't forget who supported you when, you know, I mean, really, I, a little plea here, you know, when you guys didn't have your own equipment, I brought my own equipment, you know, I mean, is Lakeville gonna do that for you, you know?
Have they reached out to you at all?
Huh?
Has anybody reached out to you?
No.
Because it was the same deal that they offered. I got, the thing that started this whole thing, uh, was the second week in December, I got a letter from the town manager in Middleborough saying, "We wanna renew the contract," and it's five thousand dollars, which is their access channel fee, plus whatever the costs are to have someone here taping the shows, the cost for the SD card.
Well, you paid for that.
But, yeah, yeah, I, yes, I know, but that's all part of the total cost. And then, um, the other cost is the editing and all of that, that's conclusive in your fee. So, they said, if you wanna continue to do that, just sign the paper, and, okay. First week in January, which I was all set to do that, Lake Camp came in and said, alright, we are up for renewal too, and then they gave us their proposal, which wasn't no longer the five thousand dollars, which they had traditionally charged for the last three years. They said, "We need to have a proposal that reflects the true cost of the services that we're providing on the educational side." So if you wanna keep us as your education, the Middleborough is not gonna go over and tape the, you know, Lakeville, Freetown football game. Like, would you? I don't know. It's, it, in terms of the synergy, that's there, that they're gonna, they're in, it's a regional school, they're gonna do the regional events for the school department and for...
They're gonna play the football games, and the soccer games, and the field hockey games, and the, right, and the graduations, and...
Basketball.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be on the feed all day long, twenty-four hours, that's what's going on. But my, my thing is, is that they're, I mean, we're buying equipment, are we buying equipment for their studio?
They don't have a studio.
In the, in a ponitway, they have it.
Oh, okay.
They have a studio in a ponitway.
They actually have a, in the Lakeville library.
In the library, that you can't call it a studio, it has, it has cameras that are set up, you know, on the, on the ceiling and that type of thing, it's not really a studio. Middleborough will be making, will be, will be doing a complete studio, actually, they're gonna do two studios, they're gonna do a smaller studio, they're taking over the Eastern Bank facilities, and that would be a tremendous thing for you guys, you know, I'd love to see you get in on that, because then you could do talk shows, and I'd love to, I would love to do that myself.
That's the, that's the thing, that's, we can't just do one or the other, 'cause the school, we have to have an agreement with them.
Right, which is why I still don't get why, alright.
That was, that might be an error, 'cause I, that was, that second chart.
If they, even if they went for option one, and they took out twelve thousand dollars...
They're saying that...
And then negotiate that down a little bit, and then do the, you know, the two of them together, I don't know.
I was kinda surprised to see it was actually as high as it is the way we're doing it now. And we are actually expired, we asked them to give us March as an extension.
Yeah, we have on both, Middleborough and, uh...
Correct.
We have till the end of the month to make a decision.
Correct.
Alright. Well, are you ready to make a motion?
If you wanna have Josie come in, and maybe Middleborough come in, so it's clear in your mind, that's...
I don't know.
I don't necessarily...
I need a little...
Clear time, okay. Alright.
I'm sorry.
Can we put that out for the next...
Don't be sorry, I just...
No, you're supposed to.
I just, yeah, it's, uh...
Clarify...
I, I think that's a mistake, 'cause Tim put the chart together, and then I amended it, so I think, I didn't catch that, so that's my fault.
No, so, because sixteen and the twelve, yeah, you, yeah.
I know they want a capital improvement.
Right.
And those are attached, actually, if you look, I showed you the equipment that they bought. The, the, my meeting with Bruce, he questioned, well, it's two years, two-year-old equipment, should we be paying full value? It totaled out to thirty-six thousand, but it's, you know, already two years into its life cycle.
I don't know. Alright, we'll put it off, but we really need to make a decision at the next meeting?
Won't you have them come in, and we can make the decision? Josie?
Sounds good.
Alright. Town of Ministries report.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to make the board aware that the governor did declare an emergency, and we have a declaration, I don't know if this can be put on for the next meeting, to, you know, be eligible for any MEMA funds that may come up as a result of the storm.
So, before the governor declares, or anytime the governor declares a state of emergency, the Board of Selectmen has to convene and vote to have the town be declared as a state of emergency. And then what happens, it triggers the accountant to start having certain numbers that would coincide with whatever, so any billing would go through those account numbers, and then it turns over to the state and we get reimbursement. So technically, that's how you have to do it, it's not on the agenda to declare us as a state of emergency, and I think that's from that trigger point, so I'm not, I'm not sure how that works now that time has elapsed, I don't know if we can go back and recoup that, so that's one question that I would have. But certainly, you know, look, I think that this storm, like I said, caught us all by surprise, you know, there was information and misinformation, and, you know, all things going around, I don't think that any of us were really anticipating the impact that the storm brought us. I think that for the, for future storms, it's also a time to reflect, right? You know, we had a warming station and a charging station, but we also lost power, so, you know, people were not aware that we had this, because they didn't, they didn't have TV, and they didn't have, you know, cell service, cell towers were down, so, I mean, so, we need to look at, how do we get the information out to our citizens, right? Cell, cell numbers, if they wanna give us their cell numbers, they can go on a one-call, so those are things that we need to look at.
It's something we're exploring, we were exploring today.
So, I mean, I think it's time to reflect and think about those things that we wish we could've done better, or things that we wish we could change as we move forward, and I think that, you know, maybe when we saw some of the limbs coming down and the roadways closed, that we could've had an emergency meeting and declared us as a state of emergency by the town, but anyway, moving forward, I think that that's something that any one of us could say, you know, well, I think it's, it's time to have, you know, in a meeting and convene and declare us, because otherwise, it puts us behind instead of putting us ahead. And that's where the command, that's why this new police station is so important, because then we had a command post, we would have a one place for all of us to go to, and, and like, you know, like, have a diagram up on the whiteboard and say, you know, this is what's up, this is what's down, you know, this section needs to be fixed, and have all those things, that is one of the reasons why we're having that community room, which is so really important, so, we can't declare ourselves a state of emergency, because, you know, it's not like, if we had an emergency meeting, it would be for that reason, this meeting was already set, I'm not sure that it would pass that amount of...
Alright, I was gonna just recommend that we hold off on signing it till the next meeting when it was on the agenda, that's a specific agenda item. I just wanted to make you aware and the board aware that the governor did actually declare an emergency on Saturday.
I just don't know if we can go back, I think it's from when the town says it's an emergency.
Can you ask, ask, will you come for that, just to make sure? And if it is the cable, if it is, it is.
Kim might know too. But I think that that's something, you know, you guys haven't been through...
We didn't have much last year.
No, so...
Got some snow, but that was it.
Yeah, not a lot.
And this was supposed to be a rainstorm.
Exactly, it took us off, like I said, it's nobody's fault, it just took us by surprise.
Um, I forwarded up to the board, the South Coast Regional Environmental Report, which is a basically a data fact sheet, they're looking for comments, which are due on March thirty, twenty-third, so the board's interested in that. We, I went to the regional managers' meeting last Thursday, it was nice to associate with all the managers in the South Coast area, and I just wanted the board to know that it was very productive and was interesting, but also that we're gonna be hosting the next one in Freetown. We received a letter on chapter ninety funds, so we received three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars in chapter ninety, plus three ninety-six eight forty-six. We have a finance team meeting scheduled for Wednesday, and a department head meeting scheduled for Monday, just so the board knows that we're continuing with that. And I just, the other thing I wanted to do, I was gonna do the same thing as you, and say thank you to the fire, police, highway, council on aging, and all the other individuals who were here during the storm, and for all the good work that they did, and for, you know, acting in the town's interest, you know, we all appreciate that.
Definitely, can't be said enough. Did you wanna talk about the timeline for...
Oh, gee, okay, that was on there too, I missed it.
That's okay.
I carried away. Uh, yeah, we, what I wanna do on the budget is, at the next meeting, I wanna schedule in the fire, police, highway, and council on aging, and start the budget process, I discussed this today with George, just to let him know that we're gonna have a joint meeting between the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Um, go ahead.
And then, I, I don't know from there, which other department you wanna have in, but I've got library inspectional services, town clerk, and then assesses, treasurer and collector at the next meeting.
Okay, so can we change it, did you already, um...
I haven't scheduled one, that was a rock, it turns out.
Just because it's crazy, fire, police, and highway in one night is, each one takes an hour.
Oh, okay, alright, I didn't anticipate that.
One big one, and then we do one big one in a few...
Can we, please, can we renegotiate those terms, please? Maybe, maybe you could do fire and highway in one night?
Yeah, Chuck's not gonna be too far.
No, and then, police and C.A.A. on another night?
Come in.
I mean, I don't, I haven't really looked at anything to, to involve, too in-depth, so I don't know. Charlie, you alright with that?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
You don't wanna be here three hours, do you?
Well, that is not...
Alright, yeah, I know, usually they take an hour, or, because I have the finance asking questions, we're asking questions, and, um, so...
They're defending their position.
Yeah, right, so it takes a while, it, yeah, you, but that was, that was...
I like his timing.
Yeah, I like that.
I figured twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes!
Boom, you're done.
Aww.
I'm an optimist, I guess.
Yeah, I like it.
Alright, anything else?
Just one final thing, that we lost our phone service today, and we have Verizon coming in tomorrow to hopefully fix it.
Have we decided if we're gonna change our phone service, and what are we going with that?
I haven't even looked at that, is that...
Okay.
Something we can explore.
Before you were on, we had all kinds of issues with it, so, we had talked about it, but I don't think it went anywhere besides that.
So it's okay now? Or maybe we should...
Since we did the last upgrade, we haven't had too much problems.
We haven't had any issues, so, yeah. Alright, but now...
It is proprietary, so we have to go through them that we don't have a contract with, and it's all that nightmare, but...
I haven't heard anything about it, but it was a big thing, so...
We're not sure if the problem today was an internal problem in terms of being in the building, because we did try to call other places that had the same number, well, on the same circuit, and they answered, so we're not sure what that means exactly.
Okay.
But they're up and running now?
Uh, they, well, there's a library across the street, right?
Yeah, library's running, we're not running.
You're still not running.
It's on, every phone in the building is now.
My home, I can get phone calls in, but I can't make phone calls out, and town hall can't get phone calls in.
So run your phone down there while it's good to go.
Yeah.
Bring your portable.
No, just take the cup and put a wire all the way down. Alright.
Um...
Is that it?
That's it.
Alright, Board of Health, discuss issues with Republic trash pickup. Nah.
Uh, since the last meeting, it's been about the same, complaints have come again, it's relatively the same clip, there's been some changes as far as the hierarchy with Republic goes, like, we had Trish as my contact, maybe a week after the last meeting, Trish was off to the Cape, so now it goes through dispatch, and I have Brian directly. There's been some communication issues with Brian that we've had to work through. It's been about the same, I can't say it's been worse, better, hasn't really changed a whole lot. I put a couple of packets together for you guys, basically just outlining what we've had for complaints since, it was supposed to be from the last meeting, but it's since January, and then, basically a checklist as far as what we can do moving forward, because we do have to make a decision by the end of June as far as renewing Republic's contract.
For the option.
For the option years. We have, we're locked in for three years, we have to make a decision by this year if we wanna continue it past June of 2019. So it's just a quick little bullet point, like, you know, we can renew the contract, we could go out to bid again, we can pick a company, we could buy our own trash trucks, do it ourselves, it's just, I'm just trying to throw out as many different ideas as possible, just so we know what options are out there, so when we do start discussing, you know, hopefully there's no big surprises, and we can just pick a direction, and that's the direction that we're headed. But as far as any significant changes from the last meeting, worse or better, no, it's been about the same.
Charlie, you didn't scare them enough.
The guy was turning purple.
You scared them.
I scared them?
No, you scared me.
You scared me too.
It was a good story that I wrote about that.
So, um, alright. Here's the thing.
I, I can't see renewing anything, so...
Right, here's the thing, like, it hasn't gotten better, we had a meeting, we tried to iron out some things, we tried to give the guy direction, hasn't gotten any better. It's not even that, it's that, you would think that at this point, people would get new to having a new trash company and things...
It's two years.
Things would die down a little bit, right? Like, okay, I know it's new, and people don't like new, but it hasn't even died down, it's really stayed the same, and it's the same consistent complaint all the time, so, I don't feel like I wanna hear another six years, three years of this, I don't know about you guys.
I would recommend that we send them a letter advising them that we're not gonna renew the contract. Well, not that we're not gonna renew the contract, but that we are advising them that we're not gonna take the option years, but we have to notify them by the end of June to correct it, and that way, they have a year plus to straighten out the problem, and if that be the case, then we'll invite them back for either a bid or whatever, however we wanna go about pursuing the situation, but I'm not... But I'm not satisfied with them at all. Today, I go out picking up stuff that has either blown out of the truck, okay, it's a windy day, either blown out of the truck, or he dropped and he didn't bend down and pick up. That's the elementary issue that I, if you, if you, if the guy's not going to even bend down and pick up the stuff that he drops, and he knows he dropped or shouldn't know he's dropped, you know, where are we? We're not going to get anywhere. So that would be my stance.
Those are your thoughts?
Yeah.
Okay, Riley?
Do we actually have to notify them, or is it default if we don't notify them that we are taking it?
Then we have to notify them.
At the sole option of the town, subject to the town approval, town, uh, approval of the town.
Upon written notice, no later than July first, twenty eighteen.
This contract may be extended for one or two years. One, two-year period upon written notice to the contract, no later than July first.
On the fourth page of the packets that I gave you, it tells you what option year one and option year two is, the time, the time periods and how much it would cost.
Yeah, I think I'm reading the same thing, it's, it's paragraph five of the contract.
No, what I'm talking about is exhibit C, where it lays out how much.
Of that, yeah, that's it. I was reading the contract itself.
Yeah. The contract, it says if you want to renew, it's upon written notice.
If we want to renew?
Yes.
But I didn't read that to say if we didn't want to renew, it would also be as written, but.
No, it says may be extended upon written notice.
Upon.
It doesn't say anything else about must notify.
Within so many days.
If you're not doing it.
Right.
And it says absent either the timely written request from the town, the contract shall terminate on its scheduling date. So if we say nothing.
If we don't notify, then, then, then it ends on July first, two thousand nineteen.
Correct.
June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So it comes down to, do we actually want to put it in writing, or do we want to just let it pass? Kind of like a table fever.
I don't want, I don't want any loopholes. I don't want a loophole. I would rather just put it in writing, and then that way there's, there's no loophole, there's, no one can make any other reference other than, no, we're not going to renew, thank you very much, so.
Do you want to do that now, though, we're two months from the deadline, three, three months from the deadline? Do you want to tie your hands and do it now, or do you want to wait until the deadline gets a little closer?
It doesn't.
See if anything changes.
Well, I, I think if we notify them now, we've given them as much notice as we can. Even if we were to end this contract and not take on the options, we could entertain, if things improve, we could entertain their proposal for a contract.
A rebid, right. We won't just rebid these fixed prices, it'll be at whatever price they rebid at.
Exactly. But I don't think that the prices that we see there, I've got to be, you know, anything that's got to overcome our issues with them right now.
I understand that, it's just.
So there are, there are two ways to look at it. If you, if you let them know now that you're not going to extend their contract, they can just totally ignore us for the next three months, or for the next fifteen months totally. But we have to notify them within three months anyway, so they're going to be horrible fifteen months, or they're going to be horrible twelve months.
Exactly.
It doesn't really matter, they're just, it's, it's not going to change.
Right.
So, I mean, yeah, you want to wait another month and, you know, have, have them be miserable for fourteen months instead? It doesn't matter to me. Personally, I have, I have no desire to go forward with this company anymore.
If I'm a pretty hot, if I'm a pretty hot sell, they'd have to come up with, they'd have to do something.
I just don't want to tie the town's hands without, if we don't need to. Why, why do it now when we can wait a month, two months, three months, and then do it then? I don't know what's going to happen in those three months, but.
Well.
Probably nothing.
Right.
It's just, do you make the decision now and deal with it?
I think the earlier we notify them though, the, the better we are in the.
For them?
No, 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 the better we are in, in our stance in, in the, you know, discussion of the, any potential, I'll, I'll say potential litigation, okay? Not that, not that I see it.
No, they're not, they don't have any.
But I think that, you know, you know, it's always, I think.
You just don't want to make it more miserable for the citizens and for Derek, that they're going to do things, oh, not that they would do things on purpose, I'm not saying that, but that would just ignore his phone calls now.
More lax.
You know what I mean, yeah, become more lackadaisical in their approach to trash picking.
If I do call Brian right now, he will pick up the phone. Once we tell him that we're done, I can guarantee Brian's going to pick up the phone when I call.
But then we, but.
But then, then they're in breach of contract at that point, and then we can cut the court.
We start fucking doing assessments, finding the assessments and all that, fifty dollars per current.
Then we can cut the court at any time after that. If, if they push that envelope, you know.
And then the next discussion would be what direction do we want to go?
That'll, that's a decision for a year from now, really.
Well, no, the decision is by June, I, we need to have something in place for a year from now.
Right, which will come up about a year from now, and it'll, it'll kick in July first. That's what we did last time.
Yeah, I think we start talking about that in September. I don't think that we need to know that right now, I think.
You're not going to be able to bid six months ahead, because people want no fuel costs, they want.
Right.
Six months ahead of a contract that's going to come.
But putting together the, the bid document and.
If we go to bid.
Right, if we go to bid.
We're not required by law to go to bid. Sometimes when you go to bid, you get the cheapest guy, not the best guy.
So it's too early now to start even thinking about that right now.
Last year, last time I went to bid, it was, they started in February, March. And then there was a disagreement amongst the board. They ended up going to bid, got the bids back in May, I believe it was, and they took for effect July, July first. And there was four bids. And these, this was all by a hundred and, hundred and nine thousand dollars. Hundred and fifty thousand lower than the last operator we had. So that's why we went, the, the board went to stretch.
No, that, that aches, not worth that.
That's clear, but, how do you lock?
I mean, it's a significant amount of money, it's not like anything to snuff at, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's probably three more thousand dollars.
But.
So that's what, we, we have to take all this into, into consideration next time we go through the process, which.
So this was actually signed May sixteenth?
May sixteen.
Right.
Had to be, I think it was May. There was a date that we had to have it in pie, and we did seal bid, opening and sealed bids, and then we.
Right.
Accepted it, and then we signed it after that.
So I think that if the board makes a decision in October, November, then he, gives him time to whatever route we're going to go, whether we do bids or whether we just negotiate, then he'll have time. We can start in January, so.
Yeah, we're not going to keep short.
All right, so back to the question, do you want to wait a month?
I, I don't, I don't.
It doesn't matter to me.
I don't feel we need to move right away for any reason.
I think that.
It's up to you guys.
It doesn't matter to me, it just, I, I think that people need to know that the board takes us very seriously.
Yeah.
And, and we, and we hear you.
I thought that's what we did the last meeting when we interrogated the guy.
Didn't work.
Well, my, my only suggestion is you give them extra time. Maybe they'll do a miraculous turnaround, I don't foresee it. But just, just giving them more time to give them to straighten up their game or realize.
I don't want to do Derek more headaches, I, I'm ready to pull the trigger, I don't have a problem.
My question to you would be.
Waiting a couple more months isn't going to hurt anything.
Do you want to do it the first meeting in April? Like, is it all of April, all of May, and all of June?
Derek, wha- what do you think? Do you think that if we notify them and say, hey, you know, unless we see some real change?
I don't think it's going to hurt either way. I think if you notify tomorrow that we're not renewing, it is what it is. If you wait till June and notify them before the, before the date, it is what it is. I don't think it's going to change it much. If it, if it were me, I would, I would hold off, but I don't think it's, I'm not anticipating seeing this huge change in the next two months.
No, I, I don't. It doesn't remove them to get, to change. Once we notify them that, that we're not going to pick up their option next year, they're going to re, they're either going to go through a rebid process, which might be higher than this number.
Right.
When we pay more for the quality of service we're getting now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that. Or they're just going to say, stop answering our phone calls. And then we have to go through the whole legal challenge of it all, you know? Whatever you guys want to do, that's fine.
Doesn't matter to me.
I, I'm in no rush, but that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm fine, whatever we want to do.
Okay, then I guess we'll, we'll wait on it and do our contractual obligation, but no more.
No more, yeah, absolutely no more.
I think we wait until April. I think in, in April, we give them another month. It's another month, it's not going to hurt, but I don't, I don't, I personally am not going to wait till June, so.
I hope they get the message that we're talking about this, they're discussing this. This is a problem. Did we get complaints weekly?
Now, the last issue that I have with Brian, I gave him a pretty good earful, so.
Empty a barrel, you leave stuff behind.
Yeah.
Okay, wasn't in the green bag, but it's, it's three cans in the bottom of a barrel, didn't, couldn't make it in the green bag, throw it in the truck.
It's.
But.
It's little things that, it's like, they, I, in my opinion, they were actually doing better. They took a step forward and then something happens, and we're taking two steps back. And then we're making a little more progress and boom, we're, we're coming right back down again. Like, they, uh, they had an issue finishing the Thursday route, which was understandable a couple of weeks ago. That's fine. I asked Brian, shoot me an email, let me know where we're at. If the route didn't get finished, I had Tim on standby. I was going to shoot Tim an email, he was going to put it on the website, these streets got missed. No email came to me, so at that point, I'm assuming everything got picked up. I come in in the morning to find out these streets got missed. Where was my email?
Under the contract, you have some, you can, you have some remedies to that too. And if, if it, if this keeps going on, then I'd start taking the remedies. It may only be fifty dollars, but it also puts them on notice that, you know, enough's enough. So if they keep missing routes, they keep cutting off, I think we had one before you were here, I think Kevin, uh, put one. He issued them one fine per the contract, so if it keeps happening, then.
I mean, the reason he missed the route was understandable, that part didn't bother me. It was the no communication that bothered me. Because we had it ready to go out to the public, you know, we apologize, but these routes got missed. If I would have gotten the email, Tim could have had that on the website by five thirty, six o'clock. It never went.
But remedy the situation. You have other people calling somebody else, bringing another truck, whatever you have to do. And remedy the situation. You're a huge, multi-billion dollar corporation. I think that's the argument I had before. You're not a small guy that has run two trucks with three guys in the back.
But the thing is, we're a small town with, and they take a small voice. And I think that the only way, obviously this company only, only deals with money, like, only thinks about money. So they're going to lose this town as one of their clients. It is what it is. I don't think they care about the town of Reno.
They just wind me up, you're going to wind me up again?
They don't care about the town of Reno.
Bring him back in, I'll have another talk with him.
Ooh.
I was gentle last time.
Gentle giant.
I started feeling bad for the guy halfway through. I had more stuff I was going to.
I didn't feel bad.
I hate putting people on the spot, but unfortunately, he's the face of the corporation that.
Exactly.
I know.
What's Brian's official title, position?
Official title, I don't know.
Regional dispatcher, or something?
He, he's a supervisor, I don't know if it's like a regional thing, if it's, I honestly don't know what his official title is.
I'm sure if you reach out to Arizona, it would be quite helpful, so you are with us.
I don't like being passed around through outsourcing.
Right.
And we cut checks.
Yeah, we pay for this. Okay. So it looks like we'll wait until April, but I think you pretty much know where we're going with this. And you can have a conversation.
That was good.
With them and saying, doesn't look good. You might want to change.
I'll reach out to Brian.
Oh, he told me that every day. You might want to change.
You might want to change, it doesn't look good.
All right, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a long day, I know, thank you.
It's good times.
It's always good to trash talk at the end of the night.
Trash, I get it.
That went right over my head in there.
It really did. Never put a hat on, well, I can point it out for you.
That just came crashing down. Have a good night.
Good night, thank you. Don't drive under the Cheryan Chase Road.
All right. Personnel.
Personnel. I have a change of status form for Philip Pine, patrolman, submitted by the police chief for patrolman P two, four to two schedule, base rate twenty-four fifty-one, two. Patrolman P three, four to two schedule, base rate of twenty-six fifteen, it's a length of service increase.
Second.
Motion made in second to endorse any discussion on the motion, here or none, all in favor?
Aye.
I have another change of status for Stephanie Brum, again submitted by the police chief for length of service increase, full-time signal operator communications, eighteen forty to full-time signal operator communications, nineteen twenty-nine. Motion made in second to endorse any discussion on the motion, here or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, then?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, captain. Oh, plan, it wasn't on here.
He skipped it.
It says personnel, well, he somehow.
It's the worst one.
The, no, I, I'm looking for the digital. The planning board has not sent in its recommendation to the planning board for the planning use person yet.
Do we have one?
No. So as soon as we get something from the board, I will put it on and we will appoint that person on the planning board. There was a hiccup.
Okay, but we have somebody in mind? No, okay.
Can't speak to that either.
All right, thank you for the.
For nothing.
Invasiveness of us all.
Well, maybe I should have just skipped it, how's that? It, it wasn't on the digital copy.
No, I'm really confused, but okay. You don't have a person, or you?
Don't have a person.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Nope, as soon as we get somebody, we'll let you know.
Okay, have we gone out? I, I'm not going to ask, I'll ask David. David, do you know if we've gone out again for the planning use administrator? No. You don't have to be invasive.
No, I'm not, no, no.
The planning board has a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, that's good. All right, is that it?
That's it.
Anything else?
Get executive session for something on here.
Yes. Hey, ready? This is great. So, um, we're going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with town hall, library, highway union, firefighters' union, and Freetown Police Union. And an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And we will continue this meeting until tomorrow at?
One thirty.
One thirty.
One thirty. Not to come back into open session.
Not to come back into open session.
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session for discussion with the collective bargaining units of the town hall, library, highway union, firefighters' union, and Freetown Police Association, and not return it to open session.
To continue tomorrow.
To continue tomorrow at, here at CO, COA at one thirty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.